To make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other. And number three is to put first things first, is put your word first, then play.
My favorite habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. As a parent, we tend to assume that we know exactly what our children are thinking or feeling or what they are going through. However, it can be something completely different. We need to give it the opportunity to express themselves in order to fully understand what is going on. This will help us build trust and understanding. I feel that the practice of the seven habits has had an impact in my family's life because I have learned to be a better listener with my children.
On today's Bridging Futures, we showcase Dahlahan Elementary School's Leader in Me program.
We've started with a book study of the Leader in Me and decided to make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other. And number three is to put first things first, is put your word first, then play.
My favorite habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. As a parent, we tend to assume that we know exactly what our children are thinking or feeling or what they are going through. However, it can be something completely different. We need to give it the opportunity to express themselves in order to fully understand what is going on. This will help us build trust and understanding. I feel that the practice of the seven habits has had an impact in my family's life because I have learned to be a better listener with my children.
On today's Bridging Futures, we showcase Dahlahan Elementary School's Leader in Me program.
We've started with a book study of the Leader in Me and decided to make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other. And number three is to put first things first, is put your word first, then play.
My favorite habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. As a parent, we tend to assume that we know exactly what our children are thinking or feeling or what they are going through. However, it can be something completely different. We need to give it the opportunity to express themselves in order to fully understand what is going on. This will help us build trust and understanding. I feel that the practice of the seven habits has had an impact in my family's life because I have learned to be a better listener with my children.
On today's Bridging Futures, we showcase Dahlahan Elementary School's Leader in Me program.
We've started with a book study of the Leader in Me and decided to make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other. And number three is to put first things first, is put your word first, then play.
My favorite habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. As a parent, we tend to assume that we know exactly what our children are thinking or feeling or what they are going through. However, it can be something completely different. We need to give it the opportunity to express themselves in order to fully understand what is going on. This will help us build trust and understanding. I feel that the practice of the seven habits has had an impact in my family's life because I have learned to be a better listener with my children.
On today's Bridging Futures, we showcase Dahlahan Elementary School's Leader in Me program.
We've started with a book study of the Leader in Me and decided to make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other. And number three is to put first things first, is put your word first, then play.
My favorite habit is seek first to understand, then to be understood. As a parent, we tend to assume that we know exactly what our children are thinking or feeling or what they are going through. However, it can be something completely different. We need to give it the opportunity to express themselves in order to fully understand what is going on. This will help us build trust and understanding. I feel that the practice of the seven habits has had an impact in my family's life because I have learned to be a better listener with my children.
On today's Bridging Futures, we showcase Dahlahan Elementary School's Leader in Me program.
We've started with a book study of the Leader in Me and decided to make a change here on our campus. And we have seen a dramatic change in the community of the teaching staff, in the community of the students, as they work together to solve problems and lead themselves. It's a beautiful thing to have students have the same language to communicate on the playground and in their classrooms, to talk about being proactive or beginning with the end in mind.
It was just a feel, a feel that you have when you walk into a school. And I felt love, I felt such focus. And seeing the children share their leadership with us was just so heartwarming. And just to see them blossom right before your eyes is really what this work is all about. It's building confidence. And of course, being in this amazing school with Mr. Husbands today and to see his incredible leadership and the impact that he is making in this community along with the teachers of this school, it's a little overwhelming.
I am just so honored to be able to have all of our guests here today for our fifth annual Leadership Day. It's all about the students and seeing the leadership potential of all of our kids and everything that they have accomplished over these years. It's something that you'll find embedded in the classrooms, in the school.
Because number six is my favorite because we can synergize and when we're playing the sport, we can help each other.
We wish we could start. There's three of us. What a choice.
We'll give Nancy a minute.
Do we have a motion and a second to close, adjourn, close session?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time is 7:03. Open session is reconvened at the direction of the Board of Education. Board meetings are recorded, broadcasted, and streamed live and may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. So before we get started, let's have Trap Elementary School 5th grade student Malaya Mims lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Did I get that right?
May Leah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
May Leah. Take it away.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, May Leah.
Yes.
And now, selected students from Mrs. Chauvin's 3rd grade class and Mrs. Batello's 5th grade class will be performing "A Million Dreams" from the movie Greatest Showman. We also want to thank Mrs. Humble, Trap's resource specialist, Principal Gutierrez, and our parents and guardians for being here tonight to support our talented Trap students. Thank you. Go Timberwolves! Do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do. So the board, in closed session, the board took action that employs number 1526339. And employee 1051339 shall be released from their administrative positions effective June 30, 2019, and shall both be reassigned to the position of classroom teacher. 184 days for the 2019-2020 school year. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education approved the claim of payment to Elite Modular Leasing and Sales Incorporated in the amount of $129,883 under Government Code Section 9201. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Kyla Griffin, Continuation High School Principal, Myler High School. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Next, we go to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved?
Second.
Do we have any polls? Preference of vote by student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
That takes us to presentations. Item B1, we'll start with Middle School District Student Advisory Committee, DSEC, and our very own student board member Jasmine Hernandez will take that way.
Thank you, President Montes. First up, from Colb Middle School, we have Austin Tighe and Rachel Montanes.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. Is it really the end of the year? What an incredible year it has been for our mighty Cougars. I am Austin Tighe, the ASP Treasurer, and this is Rachel Montanes, our ASP 7th grade Vice President. Colb is proud to announce we have completed CASP with 100% completion rate. Yes, that is correct, 100%. We had perfect attendance by our staff and a 98.5% attendance rate by our students. It was truly a joint venture that we successfully completed in six days. We can't wait to receive our preliminary data because we absolutely know with all the new changes, innovation provided this year, the mighty Cougars are going to show incredible growth. Colb held its second annual Knowledge Bowl, and round two was all about our 6th graders. Like the first round, students answered questions in all core subjects, including a few fun trivia ones. We are proud to announce that the victory went to the students on Ms. Wren's and Erickson's team. It's just one more indication of our forward motion. Our student leaders had a blast performing for 2nd graders from the district. Our earth play, sponsored by our Science and Engineering Department and companies such as Veolia, shared valuable information about the water cycle and how it makes its way through the five stages.
Our 5th grade sneak peek dance was held earlier today, and it was spectacular. Our DJ pumped up the jams, our student leaders ran a variety of games, and all of our future Cougars, who dressed to impress, left excited about their new adventures in middle school next year. Later this month, we will be celebrating our 8th graders with a special celebration dance and barbecue, plus an early release of another amazing yearbook and special rewards and prizes. It is time to show our departing Cougars how much they will be missed. As this year comes to close, we would like to thank RUSD for all of the opportunities that have been made available to our students. We have begun to plan for next year and know that we will continue to bridge academics and student development through continued joint programs and the hard work of our staff. In recognition of National Teachers Appreciation Week, we would also like to recognize our entire Colb family for their commitment to developing students who approach learning with pride while feeling emotionally supported. Before we close out our last Colb report, Austin and I would also like to personally thank Mrs. Joffrey and the Communications Department, as well as the RUSD Board for this incredible DSEC experience. We have learned so much and appreciate everything you've done to help us grow as leaders. We hope you will have a restful summer as you prepare for another great year in RUSD. Remember, Cougars always loud and proud. #Colbcougarsfamily.
Next up, from J Hugh Middle School, we have Tanya Barajas.
Good evening, President Montes, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. I am Tanya Barajas, member of J Hugh's ASB. The year has near the finish line. The light is visible at the end of the tunnel. The end is in sight. Only a few more days to enjoy our friends, learn valuable lessons from our teachers, and tuck away wonderful memories that will last a lifetime. The library books are turning and textbooks are next. The whole process organized with true precision by our fabulous Ms. Berlin. The last field trip to Magic Mountain was a huge success. The tidal wave and tattoo were tamed by our fearless coaster-riding 8th graders. Our new incoming Jaguars felt the warmth of the pride when they visited and got to have a Q&amp;A session with some of the Knowledge Bowl Jaguars. They also got their dancing on with their first-ever J Hugh dance, complete with pizza and soda and games. Great job goes to Ms. T, our 6th grade counselor, for overseeing all the details to make it the best yet. We will have our last lunchtime activity on Friday during both lunches, Disney-style. Throw on your Mickey ears and come over for some music and games. J Hugh's very own PBIS team has some of the end-of-the-year activities planned out for our trade ticket winners. On the 16th, 268 students who have mastered PBIS will get pizza and cookies with our very own principal, Ms. I.D. On May 23rd, 100 more will dance the day away in the quad with their very own, very free dance. Way to go Jaguars! We can't wrap up the year without recognizing our fabulous J Hugh scholars, without our Honorable Assemblies. If you want to congratulate our scholars with us, come over onto the J Hugh gym tomorrow morning for 6th and 7th graders, and next Tuesday, May 16th, for the 8th graders. And that brings me to almost the end. We can't end this year without our 8th grade celebration, where we say goodbye to our 8th graders, 8th grade Jaguars, and wish them the best of luck at Rialto High. Go with all the memories you made as a Jaguar, tucked away, and may you continue to grow academically and personally on this crazy ride called education. So, thank you to all the teachers at J Hugh for all your hard work you put in into making sure we reach our scholarly potential. We may not always show it, but we appreciate all you do for us. I would also like to thank Ms. Saida Joffrey, Ms. Torres, and Mr. Ricardo Carlos for the fabulous experience I had through DSEC. I learned so much and had a wonderful time. And I'm Tanya Barajas, signing off for the last time with our school motto, giving our best, never setting for less. Have a great evening, everyone, and may you all enjoy your summer.
From Cussera Middle School, we have David Louviano.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is David Louviano, and I am proudly ASB president of Cussera Middle School. I am happy to say that our ASB has been working hard getting students to keep their school spirit high. On April 29th and May 3rd, our ASB welcomed 5th graders from nearby schools to give them a tour of the campus and different electives from which they could choose from. We also held the annual Mile Master Race for students from all grade levels with the fastest mile times to compete in a race. Now, I will speak of upcoming events. With this month being the last month of the school year, we have many plans for our students. We have the 8th grade events occurring throughout this month, including the 8th grade trip to Knutsberry Farm on the 15th, the 8th grade dance on the 22nd, and the 8th grade breakfast on the 28th. Tomorrow is also our end-of-the-year award assembly to commemorate the students with 3.0 to a 4.0 GPA. We are also hosting a Breakfast of Champions on the 17th to acknowledge the students who best represented the character trait "respect." Finally, I want to personally express my gratitude for the DSEC program, for the knowledge and opportunity it gave me. It was a good experience. Thank you and have a great night, everyone.
From Frisbee Middle School, we have Gabriela Gomez.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Avila, parents, peers, guardians, and our viewing audience. I am Gabriela Gomez, representative for Frisbee Middle School. This school year really flew by, but we aren't ready to wrap it up just yet without a few activities and events for celebration. We courageously invite you to join us May 16th and put your ears in gear for an opportunity to hear all the music we have for you from this year. Frisbee Music presents the Spring Music Extravaganza for 2019. Come and enjoy a variety of tunes based on this year's theme, Hollywood Meets Broadway. Pre-sale tickets are available now in our ASB office for $1 a person. The concert is Thursday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m. in the Frisbee Auditorium. Come and be amazed. We would also like to tell you to come out and celebrate with us our end-of-the-year 8th grade dance this Friday. Come and dance the night away at our Hollywood Night Celebration. Walk the red carpet and enjoy our last party for the school year. Our 8th graders will also take off next Friday as we head out to Raging Waters for our private 8th grade day. We have prepared a fun-filled day in the sun with food and a variety of water rides that we can enjoy. We are all sure that we will have a great time. Lastly, our drama troupe will perform this Thursday evening at 6:00 p.m. for our production of Alienated. Theater is always fun to watch, but it is much more fun when it is a comedy with a mystery to it. In our play, a high school senior believes that among her there is an alien lurking. She puts together evidence and her and her friends set out to find who the alien is. However, the night does not go as planned, and it is full of a bunch of different accusations. I won't spoil the details, however, I can say that there is a twist to our mystery. Come and support our Frisbee Drama Troop. Doors open at 5:30 p.m. Don't be late. I would also like to thank the district for giving DSEC the opportunity to be a part of Disney's Youth Education Series. I learned a lot. I made bonds with people I would have never expected, and I was able to share what I learned about being a leader with my ASB family. And that's a wrap. Our school year is coming to an end. Thank you for granting me this opportunity to participate in the Rialto Unified School District DSEC program. Thank you for your time. Have a good night and drive safely.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, DSEC students, and thank you, Mrs. Hernandez. Miss? Next, we go to... Item 2, Models High School Presentation for Myler High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, viewing audience. Start with a little math here. Now, don't get scared. 1,100 school districts in the state of California, okay? How does that relate to us? Well, we're one of 1,100 school districts. And in each school district, they have approximately...well, here, we have 3,000 employees. So, let's see, if you do a little math here, okay, 1,100 times...oh...I'm looking at about over 3 million employees. That's a lot. That's a lot of people. Okay, so, when you have a state superintendent who's in charge of all those school districts, I mean, if he went to visit every school, there's not enough days in his life to visit all the schools. So, he's not going to waste his time. He's got to go either to an emergency, or he's going somewhere where he can make a difference for other school districts. I'm just amazed how Rialto has risen. We are on the map. It's hard to believe this sometimes, you know, that us? Yes. And tonight, we are going to celebrate some superstars who have made a difference for the state of California. We are excited to honor the hard-working staff of Dr. John H. Myler High School, who earned the California Department of Education CDE Model Continuation High School Distinction. Wow. Schools from the CDE Model Continuation High Schools Recognition Program are selected by officials. Comprehensive and competitive application process that involves effectiveness, assessments, and the use of data. The process includes a peer review panel and an onsite visit. The few selected schools, such as Myler High School, are noted in the state as schools which provide exemplary programs to at-risk youth. Through the use of what? Innovative instructional strategies. Flexible scheduling, guidance, and counseling services. You know, there's a lot of words there, but really, we're focusing on individuals. These are people. You've got kids who need help, and you have to have people who care about those kids. And when you put those two together, you get rewards, you get good things that happen. This is genuine stuff. This isn't just made up. Mr. Tony Thurman, he's our State Superintendent of School of Public Instruction. He visited Myler High School last month for a California Green School Silver Level Award, stated, "A culture of caring that focuses on the emotional and educational needs of the unique populations they serve are what makes these continuation high schools the best examples of how to help kids strive and reach their full potential." Now, there's something else that isn't in here, but I will share this with you. It's been said before, it takes a hitchhiker to pick up a hitchhiker. And, you know, if you've never felt that pain inside, you've never felt that you could have empathy, walk in another person's shoes for a little while, and soon, it'll appear to you. Man to my right here, if you don't mind standing, Mr. Luna? This man has walked that walk. And I'm proud to honor him tonight because it isn't just about him. Here's the superstars coming up. We, the Board of Education and Superintendent, know that Myler's success could not have been accomplished successfully at the state level without highly qualified teachers, dedicated, classified staff, and a leadership team that simply supports. The Board congratulates and thanks each staff member at Myler High School. We sincerely appreciate your commitment to our students. After this presentation, Mr. Luna is going to show a short video of students from Myler, so maybe we can view that afterwards. Right now, we're going to honor the Mustang staff with some plaques, and I'm going to call your name, and I'm going to give you the plaque, and if you'd stand in front here, we'll proceed. Kristi Luna. Faith Mole. Jeffrey Wiseman. Robert Yarborough. Peter Cayman. Cynthia Poole. Think about this, 3 million teachers out there, and you're looking just the chosen few here. Joanna Quayard. And last, but not least, Andres Luna. Did I say that? This man has walked that walk.
Can we get a quick picture with the board? And then Mr. Luna is going to kind of set up for this beautiful video. And Mr. Wiseman, I'd love for you to carry it like this, okay? Okay? We can have the board behind him. We want to show those. And then if you guys can get a little bit closer, like this, there you go. Side, perfect. Just one, or do you want to come around this side? Well, take it, or maybe then we'll get everyone. She's good. She's good. Any pictures we put on Facebook, professional shots we put on Facebook and Twitter, you guys can keep as well. We'll send you copies tomorrow in Google Drive. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name's Andres Luna. I'm the very proud principal. President Montes, Board of Education, Dr. Avila, and Innovation Team. I've been up here many times. It's enough about me, and these great teachers should speak, but today we decided to show you the real superstars of Myler High School. I had said last week that we get awards, but for us, it's the rewards these students get. These students will be graduating at the end of this month. They came to us anywhere between 80 and 100 credits behind, but they're graduating in about three weeks. Enjoy.
Here at Myler, we actually have a lot of resources to help us with college and financial aid. And for kids who stress a lot, we have a wellness center. And me personally, I go there, and I go over there and I work on my anger problems. I work on the stress that I get from academic-wise and personal-wise. And here, the Wellness Center, you can recharge yourself, and then when you go back to classes, you're more motivated and more determined to do greater, like to push yourself. And for me, that right there is something that I really cherish here at this school. I cherish the students. I cherish the staff here. Everyone here is like family, and the atmosphere is really amazing.
So, I had started from Rialto High, and I was in freshman year, and I was doing pretty bad. I was seeing that I was going to be failing, and I was trying to get help, and there wasn't no help coming in. So, I kept going. I said, I'm going to just keep doing what I need to do and see if it helps, and maybe I can get help in the future. So, it was junior year, like almost at the end. I seen the presentation that Myler had. I was doing it. I seen the opportunity to do it. So, I wondered. I came here at Myler High School.
Well, by far, the teachers at Myler have helped me immensely. They've helped me grow as a person and educationally. Ms. Luna, one of my favorite teachers here, actually helped me. She nominated me for the multilingual... the multilingual award ceremony, I actually went second in the county. And it was a huge honor to show people that multilingualism is a huge asset to today's
I wanna be a lawyer when I'm older, and I just wanna help people out, like if they really, really need it, I wanna help them out on to get their, like their papers, and stuff like that. And I want them to know, like, they're not alone, that I'm gonna be there, so I can help them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I feel really comfortable being here at Myler, I like the people I've met here, everyone's more grown up and not childish than me.
Well, over there, they did not really teach us, no, they would just give us a paper, and like, if you didn't get it, then you didn't get it. And here, I feel like, when they give you a paper, they explain everything to you, they make sure you understand what it is, and it's just a better school, like.
Here at Myler, they really care about you, they just don't throw you in the class, they introduce you to the class about your work, they wanna know you outside of school, inside of school, they really help you get your grades up.
I like how the teachers here are so supportive of decisions in, like, in school, and like, if you need anything, they're there for you, or if you need help with a certain assignment, or something out of school, they're there to help you.
At my home school, I was really much of a, I'm not gonna do it, I don't want to person, but when I saw the opportunity here that I could come to this school, it helped me change my whole life, because I had more opportunities in class, because they actually showed, they, the teachers paid more attention to what I needed to do, and actually paid more attentions, attention to the teachers.
Here at Myler, my overall experience has been really great. They motivate me to do everything. When I was at another school, I would always ditch, and I wasn't motivated nor determined, but with all the right resources that we have, like the wellness center to help me through my anger problems and any other problems that I had with my life, it encouraged me to be more motivated in class, more determined to succeed in life. And we all came to Myler for the same exact reason. We all struggle, we all go through it, and there is no judgment being placed here. And here at Myler, when you walk in this gate, it's a weight being lifted off your shoulders, to know that the teachers here are here to help you, and that you're here to help yourself. So if you get the opportunity to come to Myler, then you need to take this great chance that you're given, and you need to do something with it.
Probably overstepping my boundaries right now, because I may put this gentleman, you know, put him on the spot, but in case you weren't here for the last board meeting, he said something, he quoted, and it's been ringing with me, made a lot of sense, and I was gonna use it tonight, and I said, no, no, that's not for me to say.
Wow, I lost my speech, but it's, it, it has to do with my mentors, we were talking, I was sharing with my mentors, in that these people taught me never to strive to be right, always do the right thing, and create opportunities for everyone around me, from the students to the teachers, to the assistant principals, to have them step out of their comfort zone, and promote, and kids to succeed. And so, it was always doing the right thing that was, has been my driving force. And I just thank the Board for these great teachers, I didn't do anything in the classroom, they did it all. But I thank you so much for your support, once again. Thank you.
One more round of applause for Myler High School and Mr. Luna. Next, we go to item B3, Key to the District, from our very own clerk, Ms. Deana Walker, to Mr. John Fitzsimmons, Carter High School teacher.
So we know greatness in life, and some incredibly great individuals too. And we have never, may have never personally ever met them. To recognize someone's achievement, which is not necessarily connected to mine, was my goal. The fact that this person is an educator who develops young minds, and has a history of leading students towards the path of college, and motivating them to be smart, successful citizens, are the reasons for this award. Tonight, I want to honor a very special teacher in Rialto Unified School District. And I know it may sound very strange, that I'm giving my key to the, my key to the district to an educator who I never met before until tonight. But the beauty of this message is that we have about fifteen hundred teachers in our large district, and I, and I may not know all of them, but a person's character follows them. And in this particular instance, I was inspired by a student who began to passionately talk and vocalize about how wonderful this teacher was. This was at our Equity Council meetings a few months back. We held in the district here, and I just listened to her. I listened to her talk about this teacher, and she was sincere, she was uninhibited with her thoughts, and she talked about how he had inspired her and other students in the classroom. And that was without prompt, the question wasn't, oh, what's the best teacher you know? We start talking about, what would a great school look like? What would a great classroom look like? And then they start talking, and she start talking about, oh, and like this teacher. So I never even knew his name, she just talked about the teacher himself. Now, tonight, I'd like to bring up Mr. John Fitzsimmons. Shake your hand again. He is an advanced placement teacher at Carter High School, and now I get to talk a little bit more about him in a few minutes. Born just out of Chicago, Illinois, Mr. Fitzsimmons is married to his wife Carrie for twenty-four years. This June, they have a daughter, Catherine, who is a sophomore at Cal State Santa Claus. Mr. Fitzsimmons has his bachelor's degree in political science from USC, he's earned his teaching credential in Southern, in social science, and worked on his masters at Illinois State University. He's a Gate and Clad coursework, took his Gate and Clad coursework through UCR. He began as a dean of students at Saint Joseph's High School in Chicago until, until nineteen ninety-five, and then worked at Norwoods Junior High School in Highland Park. He began working here in Rialto, at Rialto High School in nineteen ninety-seven. Nineteen ninety-seven? That seems like a long time. I was like, oh my God. He went to open Carter High School in two thousand four, and has been teaching AP classes for twenty-one years, AP Psychology, European History, and US History. Impressively, Mr. Fitzsimmons has implemented five courses at the district, AP Psych, AP Euro, AP World History, IB History of the Americas, one and two. After all of this, he still has time for more. He's been the girls' soccer head coach at, at Carter High School for eight seasons, from two thousand five to two thousand twelve, and two thousand eighteen to the president, the head track and field coach for years, and was the assistant football coach for four years. Wow. Mr. Fitzsimmons has spoke about the reason why he went into public education. He stated, "After living through the nineteen ninety-two LA riots, I decided to go into education to help underrepresented kids get into and find success in college. Rialto has been the perfect place for me to help the first from my, from their families get into college. I have literally lost track of how many former students have become history or psychology majors. It may sound silly, but that really means a lot to me." He added, "Kids enjoy my classes because of the three main things. One, I'm open, honest, and fair with all of my students, and they know where I stand, and they know my goal is for them to be successful. And two, I adapt every year as times change. Teaching needs to change also, and I like to think that I'm constantly learning and modifying in order to make my classes stronger. And three, that education without relevance is no education at all. And a huge part of that is making things fun and active. Not everything can be hands-on, but incorporating various learning modalities does go a long way." And that was the one thing that the student talked about when she was talking about him, that that would really impress me. Mr. Fitzsimmons was asked how he felt about this honor, and after the shock wore off, he stated, "I'm absolutely humbled by this recognition, and anyone that knows me can tell that humble is not a big part of my personality. As for teachers, we don't make the most money and rarely get the recognition we deserve. Our rewards come from the former students that honor us with their successes. So to earn this recognition, recognition was truly unexpected and incredibly gratified." And he said to me, although I wasn't there, "Ms. Walker, I am grateful for this amazing honor, and I am grateful to get it." Well, you're welcome again, Mr. Fitzsimmons. I agree that there are not many perks or recognitions. With twenty-nine schools, a full-time job, I'm juggling my child, who's also in middle school here in the district, I try to get to as many events and classrooms as I can, if, but if the doors are open, then one day, I'll fulfill my desire to come and sit in your class. And by the way, the student who got inspired me to select Mr. Fitzsimmons is one of our students on the ASB DSAC, she's the leader, Nyla Robertson, where are you at? Come on. Thank you for your service, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And I am dedicating my key to you, sir. I wanna actually just give, I wanna give you a chance to speak, but I want you to just say a few words about him, because you talked about him so eloquently, so fervently, that I was like, who is that guy? And I think I talked to Said, and I was like, no, she's like, who are you gonna give your key, I'm, who are you gonna give your key to? And I said, I don't know his name, I don't even know, I just know that this teacher made such an impact on this student, that I've got to find out who it was, and she said, who was it? And I told her who it was, she said she'd find out and find out, and so that was just it. So, again, I thank you, because oftentimes, people don't realize the impact that teachers have, when we talk about all these budgetary things, and these happen, the real work is in the classrooms. And you will touch and meet, you will touch and reach more students than any of us in these other high places. So the work that you do is so valuable. Thank you, I appreciate it. Do you wanna say a couple words about the teacher?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Nyla Robertson, I'm the ASB Vice President at Carter High School. Okay, so I would like to start off by saying, Mr. Fitz has made, if not one of the biggest impacts, the biggest impact at Carter High School. I had him my sophomore year and my junior year, so I had him back-to-back. Had him for AP European History, and I had him for AP Psychology. So when I first walked in his classroom, I remember him telling me, I had my phone out, and he was passing out the syllabus, and he was like, he came to my desk, and he tapped, and he said, excuse me, can you put your phone away? So I was like, okay, put my phone away, put my phone away, put phone in backpack. Then he came back again. He kinda made a joke, but it wasn't that funny to me. So I was like, oh, so he thinks he's funny, okay. So I was like, so we can, we can play this little game. So I, off the bat, I just knew, me and Mr. Fitz, we're gonna hit it off, like, that's what we call him Fitz, not Fitzsimmons, we call him Mr. Fitz. So yeah, I was like, we're gonna hit it off, he's gonna be probably like my favorite teacher. We had, we're both very dominant people, you can say, so we, we kinda, a lot, so like, we're back and forth a little bit. But he, he really understands me, like, like no other teacher that I would say understands me. So he knows, like, if I come in the classroom, and maybe I'm having a bad day, or I might have a little attitude, he, he's not the one to have attitude, wait, first of all. But if I do have attitude, he just tells me, like, something funny that'll just brighten up my day. So I had him first, no, I had him first period my junior year. And I didn't see him a lot, because I wouldn't come to class, and that was on me, but when I did come to class, it was like, he just brightened up my day, like, I would go through things at home, and when I, although he didn't know exactly what I went through at home, it was kind of like he could tell. So he didn't, without asking me, he kind of already knew, and he just, he always knew what to say. Every student that's ever had Mr. Fitz, that I know, never complains about Mr. Fitz, he's truly like a humble human being, like, without him being like humble, with showing it, you can tell that he's a humble human being. He doesn't get recognized for a lot of things at our school, and it kinda breaks my heart, because he's like one of the best teachers at our school, if not the best teacher. You could tell that he's really invested into what he teaches, so he's not just one of those teachers that'll just hand us a worksheet and tell us to get it done, he's one of those teachers that'll hand us the worksheet, talk about the worksheet the whole period, and make sure that every student in the classroom understands what's on that worksheet, and how to get the worksheet done. And what I brought up when we were talking about how to make a, a nice school, is we need more teachers like Mr. Fitz, that are able to have that connection with their students, that are able to know, without really knowing what the students are going through, even if they don't have to ask him. And yeah, I just love Mr. Fitz. Oh, and she asked me to tell you guys where I'm going to college. This upcoming fall, I'll be attending the University of California, Irvine. And I'll be majoring in pre-law and minoring in criminology.
I did not know I would have to speak. So, thank you very much, this is amazingly humbling, and seriously, I'm, she says I'm humble, I'm not at all. So I'm not gonna say a long time coming, but, no, I mean, this is, so, but seriously, this is an amazing honor, especially considering how many outstanding teachers are in this district. I mean, we just saw a handful from Myler, those are some great people. We have amazing teachers at Carter High School, there are amazing teachers at Ike, and Rialto, and Zupanik, and this is awesome. Thank you very much.
If the students can call him that, can the Board call him that?
Next, we go to item C, Comments. Item one, Public Comments from the Floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item, not on the agenda, will be granted And we'll begin with Principal Frank Camacho.
Good evening, Board of Education. Superintendent Dr. Avila, and the Rialto Unified School District, and the community. Tonight, accompany, tonight is my career tech technician, Nancy Ibrahim, and then we have the honor today to introduce former Rialto Middle School teacher, Tim, and his wife, Marty Brooks, as they have a special announcement tonight for two of our seniors that are graduating this year.
This is the, I mean, it's stupid that I'm so emotional, but I need to get over this, but what will help is, as a twelve-year-old, I played football for Ron Kramer's father. And in nineteen eighty-nine, I taught with Rosie Williams, she was at Rialto Middle. And in nineteen eighty-eight- And in 1988, I substitute taught for Nancy O'Kelly at Cole.[602.54][602.54](laughter) And I, I attended Trab, Cole, Eisenhower. My friend Robert attended Dunn, Cole, and Eisenhower. And we both had a teacher, Wanda Mahoney, in, in, uh, math. And she made a big impression on us, but she's passed away. But he came to me and said, "I want to do something. I want to make a scholarship in her honor and I want you to take care of those things and I will give you the money." And I said, "Well, that's good because I don't have the money."[644.23][644.23](laughter) So we, uh, got together and I called, I, I don't know how I found it, but I remembered seeing Rosie's name as something with the board. So I said, "Okay, I'll call her up." And I said, "Rosie, I need some help. I need to try and get a scholarship going." And she put me in touch with Mr. Mohammed, I think, or Mohammed Islam, who then got in touch with Karen Smith and we got the ball rolling. So, um, the other guy is Robert Summers. He's, I taught middle school math, inspired by Ms. Mahoney. He learned a respect for numbers from Ms. Mahoney and has gone on to do great, well, great things with money and he's established a lot of foundations. And one of them is a $100,000 scholarship, $10,000 a year for 10 years.[706.73][706.73](applause) And, uh, I challenge, well, before I get a challenge, Nyla, maybe in 40 years, come back and honor someone like, I heard, I didn't know who you were and I'd heard that what you've said about him is fantastic. But the scholarship is from Eisenhower High School and we wanted it geared toward math because of Mrs. Mahoney and, uh, the first two recipients that each received $5,000. Who I just met this evening.[752.32][752.32](laughter)
We're so excited about the, the first annual Wanda Mahoney Scholarship Award. And the first one goes to Clarissa Gutierrez.[770.41][770.41](applause)
And our second, our second one is Francisco Hernandez.[785.41][785.41](applause) I don't have, I've already turned in the money, but I don't have anything to give them, so I'm not sure, is that...
We'll give it to them.
Oh, oh, senior, okay. Okay.[802.66][802.66](laughter) So that's, but, uh, like to thank all of you and putting up with a, a big sissy up here.[810.66][810.66](laughter) Because I could stand in front of middle school kids, it was no problem, but then when I give out things from the heart, it's tough to do, but, thank you.[819.00][819.00](applause)
Thank you for, thank you for commemorating Mrs. Mahoney in that way. She was a wonderful teacher and a wonderful person.
And we tried to get her husband, I guess she never had kids and her kids were her students and, uh, we somehow got in touch with her husband, but we weren't able to try and get him here. So, yes, but, yeah.
Do we have any other speaker cards with children or students present? I'd like to, um, let those go first in case, uh, they need to get back to homework. Hearing none. Next, we go to Celia Saravia.[880.00][880.00](applause) Not, not on the agenda. I have another item for you for on the agenda.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board.
President Mr. Montes.
President Mr. Montes.
Vice President Amiso Kelly.
Vice President Amiso Kelly.
Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Soy Celia Saravia.
I am Celia Saravia.
Y represento al grupo de apoyo para padres de niños especiales.
And I represent the parent group for support for, uh, children with special needs.
Y esta noche le vuelvo, vengo a hacerles una invitas, otra vez a invitarlos, a recordarles.
Tonight, I come to invite you again to remind you.
Como todos los años.
As every year.
Para que nos acompañen a la celebración anual.
So that you can join us for our annual celebration.
De los sacramentos de los niños especiales.
Of the special children's sacraments.
Que será el domingo 19 de mayo.
Which will take place on Sunday, uh, May the 19th.
A las 3:00 de la tarde.
At 3:00 PM.
En la Catedral de San Bernardino.
At the San Bernardino Cathedral.
Ubicada en el 2525.
Located at 2525.
North Arrowhead Avenue.
North Arrowhead Avenue.
In San Bernardino.
In San Bernardino.
Our Lady of the Rosary.
Ah, sí. Nuestra Señora de, del Rosario. Catedral de Nuestra Señora del Rosario.
At the cathedral, Our Lady of the Rosary.
Todos son bienvenidos.
All are welcome.
Y como siempre, será un gran honor contar con la presencia de ustedes.
And as always, it will be an honor to host you.
Gracias.
Next, we go to Mr. Michael Montano.
Good evening. Before I speak, I'd like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, two things. One, Andy Luna, who was just recognized earlier again. I had the opportunity to work with him, uh, and, uh, he did two things that not only helped me, but went on to help a lot of students. So, uh, I'd just like to acknowledge him and thank him for that again. So, in case he left, thank you, Mr. Luna. Secondly, uh, our Rialto softball team just ran, won another round of, uh, CIF, so great job to them. Hopefully, they'll win a few more and take the title.
They just beat Aquinas?
Aquinas.
Aquinas, Aquinas, tomato, tomato.[1055.41][1055.41](laughter)
So, great job to the coaches and to the players. Today, we had, uh, three fights on campus. There was a fight just yesterday. And Monday, Rialto High had another mini riot consisting of several fights, one right after the other, with an additional fight in the hall several minutes later. A police officer was actually shoved while trying to break up one of the fights. A police officer shoved. That's a crime. Many of our staff are concerned and question the safety of our staff and students. If a student is willing to shove an armed police officer, armed with a gun, what is that student willing to do to an unarmed adult? And what is that student willing to do to another student? I can tell you. During a previous fight this year, an extendable pipe or baton was whipped out and used to strike one of the students twice on the head, causing the student to bleed. Video can be provided, video of all these fights can be provided. A few months back, when the previous mini riot broke out, there were several staff members to lend a much-needed hand. However, now with security unable to carry pepper spray, unaffected deterrent teachers and staff are thinking twice about helping. When these situations happen, they are fluid, volatile, and scary. We need an abrupt way to restore order to these chaotic and unsafe situations before a catastrophe occurs. If you've ever been present when pepper spray is administered, you know it's very unpleasant and fighting is the last thing on your mind. I have twice been in the vicinity of pepper spray being sprayed and although not very comfortable, it definitely works. It is non-lethal and highly effective. We are having way too many acts of violence and need help in keeping everyone safe, primarily our students. That's what we are here for. With the inception of PBIS, our administrators have come close to no discipline so as to keep our dashboard with as few suspensions as possible. Referrals written versus what is actually recorded does not match. The behaviors are not going away, they're escalating. Parents want to know their children are safe in our schools. We have students with over 200 tardies to class. We have students who have been well, in well over five fights this year. Students who've been caught with drugs multiple times. Students say that once in a while, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to read that. We have crimes occurring that are not getting reported. Our students deserve better. Too many of our students are affected by these occurrences. Our students deserve better. Our students deserve better. We have PBIS but no discipline plans. We are sometimes looking at incidences on a case-by-case basis, looking at the whole child. That is not PBIS and goes against restorative justice practices. When our students leave our schools and go into the streets, there is no wellness center. When a student threatens one of our campus security, spits on them, calls them a nigger, and we do almost nothing about it, shame on us. Shame on us. Because we know what is likely to happen to that student behaving like that out in the public. This needs to change and we're asking for your help.
Just for reference, uh, next time, uh, please don't say the profane, profanity of the words. Maybe you could just spell that out or say the N-word.
I apologize.
No problem. Um, now we go over to Michelle Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm back. Just in case you were wondering where I went, I haven't gone anywhere. I just haven't, uh, been to a lot of board meetings lately. Um, I wanted to, uh, tell you guys a little bit about me. I've been in this area my whole entire life. I've gone to school all but about two and a half years in Rialto. All my children went to school in Rialto and I have grandchildren coming up who may be going to school in Rialto. So I'm first and foremost a member of this community, longtime member of this community. I'm going to try not to get emotional because I'm kind of, I'm piggyback off of some of the things Mr. Montano said. All over Rialto, we have students succeeding because we have wonderful staff. Teachers that care, dedicated. You guys always see the good stuff. It's wonderful to come in here and see all of the good stuff, but there's a dark side churning around in Rialto. Feels like a tornado about to touch down and bring devastation to me. And I have felt this way all year and haven't come to talk to you about it until now. Because I too witnessed a really volatile situation the other day and let me tell you what, it was ugly. Dangerous and ugly. And the goal of PBIS is not to create, is to create a positive school climate. PBIS is not designed to be a substitute for structure, standards, discipline, or consequences. PBIS should be beautiful, utilize as support for positive behavior, not the absence of discipline, which is what it's turned into. As consequences have diminished, bad, illegal, disrespectful behaviors toward anyone and authority have increased to the point where our students and staff are not safe. And this isn't just a Rialto High School problem, it's a district-wide problem. I talked to many people that are experiencing the same things on their campus. When students question why these behaviors are tolerated, everyone blames PBIS. It is, in fact, a lack of consequences outlined in ed code that have created a dangerous environment. For example, when our security officers were directed to stop writing tickets for fighting, a rise in fighting on campuses ensued. And that was something that started four years ago. We've hit critical mass that's been building those four years due to complete neglect and disregard for the ed code. Incidents such as fighting weapons, drugs, and inciting are routinely addressed as minor incidents or ignored completely. As we near the end of school, behaviors are escalating to the point of jeopardizing the safety of everyone on campuses. During a student panel two years ago, one of our students said, "Please stop lowering the bar. We need to be encouraged to have higher expectations so we succeed beyond high school." That's from one of our students. At the same time, we've removed the ability of our safety officers to effectively intervene in serious incidents. They've been stripped of tools to disperse a crowd of unruly, violent, and non-compliant students. This has created a mob mentality, which our students are emboldened to do whatever they want without fear of consequences, but the inevitability of serious injury to students and staff. Safety of our campus is far outweigh the need to satisfy unreasonable complaints that spark a reaction by our district that is not in the best interest of our students, employees, and guests on our campuses. Students are regularly, regularly reporting they don't feel safe on campus. They are truly afraid of what is going to happen next. They see inequity in the way students are being treated, which has led to escalating tensions. And I'm going to define equity, as the dictionary defines it, the quality of being fair and impartial. They're not seeing that. As we continue to compromise our standards, we're creating an apathetic workforce, unable to effectively do their job. This also compromises the safety of everyone in the Rialto community. Instead of blaming PBIS for the decline of behavior of our students, let's quit worrying about the California dashboard and do the right thing for all of our students, which is to prepare them for life in the real world and keep them safe at school. With so many teachers and staff support working hard on a daily basis in spite of this crisis, we cannot afford to abandon them. We need to support all staff in the class academically and behaviorally. As it stands now, we are a far cry from at least two bullet points on our district mission statement. High expectations for student achievement, safe and engaging learning environments. Our students deserve a safe learning environment. They also deserve a classroom teacher that is able to engage students in learning without having to constantly deal with disruptive behavior. In conclusion, I'm going to quote Edmund Burke, and that's the reason I'm here tonight. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing." And it's your responsibility to make sure our students are safe at school.
Next, we go to Myrna Reese.
I was actually here to invite you guys to, um, to, and remind you about our HSA Honorary Service Award Dinner for PTA, which is May 24th at 7:00 PM at Sierra Lakes. I know some of you have already RSVP'd. But, um, I will discuss the safety and concerns that we, uh, parents also have, and I think, you know, we have brought it up to your attention, but I will be bringing another issue up during my, uh, next comment, which is on the agenda.
Next, we go to comments on the agenda. Public comments on the agenda, any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. First, we have Felicia Izquierdo.[1635.62][1635.62](applause)
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, guests and parents. A group of parents and myself are here to support the summer program at Fitzgerald Elementary School. On behalf of the group, I just want to say we are very excited to know there will be a safe place for our children to attend during summer in our own community. That also provides academically enriching components, strengthening them for the upcoming year. I believe it will have such a positive impact on our students academically and ethically through innovative teachings and a strong PBIS system. There is no better way I can think for our students to spend the summer. Thank you for your time and support.
Next, we go to Celia Saravia.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board again.
President Mr. Montes.
President Mr. Montes.
Vice President Amiso Kelly.
Vice President Amiso Kelly.
Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Superintendent Dr. Avila.
Audiencia.
And audience.
Soy Celia Saravia.
I am Celia Saravia.
Y represento al grupo de apoyo de niños especiales.
And I represent a support group for special needs children.
Y revisando la agenda.
And reviewing the agenda.
Leímos en la página referencia cuatro J, ah, mi J, cuatro punto uno.
We read on reference J 4.1.
Que van a despedir a personal de behavior, de comportamiento.
That you are going to fire personnel of behavior.
Queremos pedirles que reconsideran la decisión.
We want you to reconsider this decision.
De despedir a personal de behavior.
Of letting go of these behavior personnel.
Porque son necesarios.
Because they are necessary.
Ellos son los que le dan seguimiento.
They are the ones to follow up.
Al behavior intervention plan que Celia hace acá de estudiante.
Follow up on the, um, behavior intervention plan that is designed for each student.
Son los que le dan apoyo a los maestros en el salón.
They are the ones who support the teachers in the classroom.
Y a los especialistas de comportamiento.
And also the behavioral specialists.
Cuando ellos están en los juntas de IP.
When they are in the IP meetings.
Tenemos entendido.
We understand.
Que cada uno de ellos le dan apoyo a siete escuelas.
That each one of them supports, um, seven schools.
Les pedimos que reconsideren. Les pedimos que reconsideren la decisión.
We ask that you reconsider this decision.
Sabemos que todos los servicios son importantes.
We know that all services are important.
Y que entre más recursos tengamos.
And that the more resources we have.
Así será el éxito de nuestros estudiantes de educación especial.
Such will be the success that our special education children will have.
Por eso les pedimos.
Therefore, we ask you.
Que reconsideren la decisión.
Reconsider this decision.
Porque si quitamos personal de comportamiento.
Because if we remove behavioral personnel.
Eso implica que tendremos que mandar.
That implies.
Que tendremos que mandar a más estudiantes.
That we would have to send more students.
Con comportamientos.
With behavioral problems.
A escuelas no públicas.
To non-public schools.
Y eso implica que se gastará más dinero.
That implies that we will spending more money.
Por favor, reconsideren su decisión.
Please reconsider your decisions.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Myrna Reese.
Hello again. This time, I'm here too also to speak about the item J. 4.1, which is regarding the same topic that Ms. Saravia spoke about, which is the Behavioral Support Assistant. We have, based on the item on the agenda, it says, and I read and quote, "Reduction or elimination of classified positions due to budget constraints." That is a huge concern, especially when we're having all these issues. You hear, you know, the public come and tell you about the fights and all these things are happening with our students. That's another issue aside from having people already there to help our kids, you know, with behavior. And we're not only talking about, they don't only help kids, you know, that have IEPs. They're also there to help with general ed. And yet, we're getting rid of, pretty much, of these people that do so much. You know, you will have five, and yet, like Ms. Saravia mentioned, they do help seven schools each. So instead of getting rid of people, we need to get more people, especially when we're hearing fights over and over again in middle school, elementary school, high schools. It's getting to the point that, yes, we have wonderful things and we have wonderful recognitions with students, but we have those students that need the help. And we're failing them. And you guys are there, sitting there, to help them. Let's stop ignoring this. Let's pretend that it's not happening. Let's stop pretending, I should say, that it's not happening. But yet, for whatever reason, we keep coming back and back and back. And we're here for the same thing over and over again. It's almost like, it's frustrating. You know, I stopped coming here and raising my concerns because it gets to the point where it's like, come on, it's a waste of my time sometimes. But I'm here again, and I'm gonna keep coming back until something is done. We're talking about budget constraints. So what are we doing with our budget? Are we not doing properly our budget? Are we not, you know, do we need to amend budgets? Because we are spending money on things that we shouldn't be spending money. Maybe we need to cut some, you know, some raises here. Maybe we need to cut some people getting, you know, paid over $100,000. And those people are not even doing anything. And let me not go in there. And this is something that we have brought up to your attention over and over again. So it's about time we need to step up and do something for our kids. Unless, like Ms. Saravia mentioned, if you guys want to start having due process and getting sued, we don't want to be another district that gets, you know, goes bankrupt. Why? Because we're failing to do what we're supposed to do. Where we stood here and raised our hand and promised that we were gonna be here to help our students. Thank you.
Next we go to public comments from Association Executive Board members. And we'll start with Rialto Education Association, REA.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Montes. Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. I want to congratulate Mr. Fitzsimmons for his key to the district. There's no better way to recognize an employee than through a student's eye. So thank you, Ms. Walker. I also want to mention that the Rialto Education Association will be passing out over $10,000 worth of scholarships again this year to our five high schools, the three continuation ones, and Miler and Zupanic. And I would also like to address the student, I'm sorry, I had to run. The student behavior that some of the teachers and members of the community spoke about this evening. They're right. There has been an uptick in aggressive, violent behavior, not only in this district, but statewide and nationwide, unfortunately. I do have a study from the Oregon Education Association that just came out about solutions to these issues. I've been talking about it with the superintendent at Problem Solving. But something does need to be done. I personally do not blame PBIS. I think it's a good framework, but it needs to be done right. And what I think has happened is that in our effort to be only positive, we've abandoned consequences. And frankly, we can't do that anymore. So positive behavior support systems doesn't mean you only do positive things. Sometimes there has to be a negative consequence. And it's not there anymore. And our kids are kind of running amok. So, and I hate to tell you, but it's from preschool all the way to 12th grade. So we've got kids throwing chairs, tearing up classrooms, and these are elementary kids. And they do need some serious intervention. And that brings me to my next point. I know you are laying people off this evening. And I feel for them. But to be honest, you need professional clinical people in these settings. People who understand the teaching profession, who have probably been teachers, and who have clinical experience with these extreme behaviors. We're not just talking about a fight at a high school. We're talking about kids who choke other children, who drag other children across the floor by their hair, who tear up classrooms, who attack adults. And these are little ones that'll do that. So you are gonna need professional people to intervene here. And so that's my recommendation. We're going to need more resources for these kids. And sometimes the setting they're in right now is not the appropriate setting. Not only for them, but for their peers. So I'm here to advocate not only for our educators, but for our students as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lindberg. Next we go to California School Employees Association, CSCE.
Good evening, Rialto Unified Family.
Good evening.
I gotta say that I'm not really feeling the family love this evening. I do want to congratulate all the award winners. It's awesome again to see people recognized for their good doings. But in the presentation to Miler, I think it was failed to mention that it takes a team to win an award of such a nature. And I really didn't hear anything about classified staff, about the many instructional aides that are in all those classrooms, about the nutrition service workers feeding those students, about our clerical, our secretarial staff in the office keeping that running, about our custodians keeping it clean, about our bus drivers getting them there, our mechanics keeping the buses running, about maintenance department keeping that campus looking as beautiful as you saw in that video. It takes a team. And I didn't hear it mentioned. I'm kind of sad about that. Furthermore, I wanted to report to you on progress on two issues that I brought to you at the last meeting. On the class and comp study, the district did respond to CSCE. We do have a calendar from the district. I want to thank Rhonda and the Personal Office for that information. I am looking forward to hopefully seeing the contract very soon. On the second item, with these security officers. The public has spoken tonight, definitely. I've seen some videos. It's not a good thing that's going on in our schools. I have met with Chief Leary. He is working diligently to resolve this issue as fast as possible. Looking forward to finishing that process quickly and getting our officers, our safety officers, the tools they need to do their job. Also, you've heard from the public tonight about item J. 4.1. While I understand the district's is acting within its legal rights to do so, I would be failing my classified members if I didn't ask this board to pull and postpone this item. After researching this item on my own, it's my belief that the district has had plans all school year long to do this. They failed to mention it. These people, these people behind me, these are already the behavioral specialists that we're talking about. They could have had the entire school year to say, to know the district's going a different pathway. And they could have had the opportunity to look for work elsewhere in our district or elsewhere in their field. Instead, they're giving less than 30 days before the end of school notice. That's unfair. Furthermore, as our SERP has come up, the district has been flying jobs, creating eligibility lists. Many of the jobs have already been flown and positions have not been filled, but there's eligibility lists now. They're, all of a sudden, they're notified today or they're out of work. They don't have an opportunity to apply within our district. Again, not feeling the love. So, please show Rialto, all Rialto staff, that you care. We need to give these people an opportunity to work here at the same pay level, at the same job level that they've been working. Let's show the parents in the community that you care about students and doing what's right, as Michelle said. Thank you and good evening.
Next we go to Communication Workers of America, CEWA. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm also hopeful that you will reconsider that J. item also because with this fighting going on, maybe you actually need some more, like they already said. Because people are gonna be afraid to come to school if there's too much fighting going on. And thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next we go to Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA. Everybody looks at Mr. Harris.
Right.
Okay, if not, we go to item four, comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Montes. And good evening on this Teacher Appreciation Week, National Nurses Week, and Nutrition Employees Week. And with such a diverse appreciation for public education leaders, I would have to say that if the heartbeat and spirit of education is in the classroom, the fuel that energizes, that spirit also comes from our hard-working, classified and support staff members who help shape and nurture the entire child. Also, congratulations to the entire Miler High School staff, along with Mr. Fitzsimmons, for their worthy and deserving recognition this evening. Thank you so much for having such a positive impact on the lives of students. Congratulations to Miler High School senior Brian Cruz, whom you saw in the video earlier, who earned a scholarship for placing second in the SA contest from the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools at the 32nd Annual Multilingual Recognition Awards Dinner in Ontario. Congratulations to Carter High School sophomore Joel Martinez, who won this year's Congressional Art Show called the Cal Arts. His work entitled Self-Portrait will be displayed for one year in the Capitol Building in Washington, DC.
Cool.
And congratulations to Rialto High School senior Allison Matas, who earned second place in that same competition. Her artwork entitled Siren will be displayed for one year at the Congressman Pete Aguilar's office in Washington, DC as well. Congratulations and a big thank you to all the district volunteers who last week were recognized at this year's parent volunteer luncheon for the tremendous service they provide to the students, staff members, and families of the Rialto Unified School District. And congratulations to former Eisenhower Student Athlete and previous student board member Micah St. Andrews, who went on to play football at Fresno State and last week was drafted to the NFL by the Detroit Lions. We wish Micah lots of love and luck in the NFL. And thank you, Micah, for crediting your district for a great start to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Next we go to our very own student board member, Jasmine Hernandez.
Thank you, President Montes. Yesterday, DSEC attended the YES Program at Disneyland. This leadership training taught us the importance of personal branding, also to learn from our past leaders and build upon their skills, and also to understand the importance of risk-taking. And lastly, they helped us and inspired us to find the courage and determination to accomplish our goals and believe in our dreams. And I want to give a huge thanks to the board and Dr. Avila and Mrs. Joffrey and Mrs. Torres and Mr. Carlos for giving us this amazing opportunity. So DSEC, thanks you. And also, good luck to our AP testers. I know it's a stressful week, but good luck. Keep pushing, you got it. And I'm also excited for senior awards tonight. I can't believe this school year is coming to an end. And good luck to everyone, and we'll get through it. And just have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Next we go to Mr. Ayala.
Thank you, President Montes. Tonight, I'm going to share some thoughts on communication. But first, I would like to respond and give my dearest apologies for not mentioning the classified staff. And because, you know, sometimes we get nervous up there and, you know, we forget things. I've been known to forget my name at times when I was asked, "What's your name, sir?" And I'm so nervous, I don't even know what my name is. But it may not appear, but I don't want to use that as an excuse. But I will say, I definitely apologize because that hurt me. And because I care a lot about everybody here in this school district. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Thank you. Communication is everything. It really is, guys. And there's a lot to be said about communication. One of the most important, we've talked about this before, but it's not gonna hurt going over it again. One of the best parts of communication is being a good listener. And I will share with you that our superintendent here, that was one of the highest qualities that he had. This is going in and out, but that's okay. And so when he brought those qualities here, we were so proud because that's what we were looking for. We wanted somebody that could communicate. And being a listener is like 90% of it, okay? And not many of us are very good at that. We'd rather, I'm one of them, would rather do this than use this part of the brain. But when you're speaking to groups, it's not a bad idea when you have a meeting to say, "It's okay to disagree." You know, because we can't always agree on things, okay? And so when you're having these group discussions and meetings, that's not a bad way to start, okay? Now, let's bring communication into life here, okay? A lot of people sometimes, when they work for an organization, they're intimidated by sharing their thoughts, their inner thoughts. They're afraid to make a mistake. What they're really afraid of is retaliation. And I can, I'm gonna risk here, but I really believe, I really believe that each and every board member here believes in open communication without retaliation. And this is huge because it's very important to be able And this is huge because it's very important to be able, to be able to share your thoughts if you're gonna grow. So, but it is also important to understand that we all have roles and we all have jobs to do, okay? And so, to follow the protocols, follow the lines of, of communication, go to your immediate supervisor, and hope that that works. You gotta give them a little bit of time, okay, because we're not magicians, okay? People need time to find a solution. And to find a solution, sometimes you gotta go through a process, you know? We don't have an autocratic form of government here. We believe in democracy. We listen to both sides and we look at a compromise, we try to find that resolution. I've seen it. It takes a little longer to make a decision, but the outcome is better and it'll long, it'll be long-lasting. Well, it's done here. Again, please, continue to come up, speak, let us know what your thoughts are. Even if you don't have the best style, it's okay, because what we're trying to do is reach, understanding with one another, because that's what's gonna move us forward. Thank you so much for the opportunity to, to share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. And just a question, Mrs. Hernandez, do you have to take? Okay, not yet. Just so you guys know, whenever you gotta go, just, just go, don't worry about us. I'm not kicking you out, I'm just saying, in case you got homework or study, no problem. Next, we go to Mr. Martinez.
Okay, good evening, all, and I agree that there are some issues with PBIS and our security officers, we discussed last board meeting, pulling the pepper spray. What I know about PBIS, I'm not sure I like what I'm hearing. What I'm understanding, and Dr. Avila, before I spout off anything that is bad information, perhaps we can get some, a five or 10-minute presentation on what PBIS really is, because what I understand it is, I'm not sure I like it. What it's doing, I, I get it. The kids need every, every chance, but we need a secure campus, a secure city. The security officers, we, we need to revise that as well, just maybe not change it, but understand how, how we wish them to respond, just for public interest. One time, they did a lot more. Now, it's observe and report, but if you're surrounded by 50 kids, how do you call the police department? Observe and report, it goes right out the window, so there needs to be a tertiary plan. Okay, the rest of the report is not going to come out today, I'm just gonna give you the, the teaser. Skills to Boost Your Pay. I'm gonna put it on our website tonight, or first thing in the morning, I'm gonna be easy on myself.
What website is that?
JoeMartinez.org. Thank you. And it'll be upper right-hand quadrant, and it's, I printed seven pages of 27, wasn't planning on going through them all. Mr. President, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we go to board clerk, Ms. Deanna Walker.
I'd just like to say again, thank you for the hard work that goes on in the classrooms by our teachers, and it's sad to say that when teachers feel that they, that there are no awards for teachers, so we should try to figure out a way that we do award our teachers, whether in big settings or small settings, for those little and big things that they do for our students. And the one thing is when students have a, an outward response to the good things that they get from those students, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Next, we go to Vice President, Ms. Nancy O'Kelly.
Yes. You know, since I've been on the board, you know, PBIS came in years ago. The concept of PBIS is excellent. However, it will not work if it is not thoroughly and completely implemented as intended. And in most schools, due to lack of manpower or whatever, it has not. And what has happened, administrators get frustrated too because they're, talked about their suspension or expulsion numbers at every school, and it's like we wanna present this image, if you have low suspension and expulsion numbers, it should mean that there isn't any of that behavior going on at your school. But my understanding from many sources is that it does go on at the schools, and, but they, they can't suspend, or they send them back to class, or they, you know, they take other measures, which is all part of PBIS, but PBIS was never meant to replace discipline. And Michelle, I liked what you said, to stop worrying about what it says on the dashboard and make sure our campuses are safe. Absolutely true. So, I, this is something we have got to work on immediately, because we've heard too many complaints. It's not just, you know, here or there. There is a problem pervasive with the understanding of how to deal with kids using the PBIS system. So, maybe we don't need it in high school. Who knows? But we'll see. We'll take about that. But, anyway, I did wanna congratulate my good buddy, Micah St. Andrew, because I used to sit where Mr. Ayala is, and Micah sat right there, and we talked all the time, because he was a fellow Eisenhower person, and I was very proud of him, and to be drafted into the NFL is just amazing for him. So, congratulations, and we wish you the very best of luck. And I also want to say that I was, attended the multilingual recognition dinner, which honored outstanding students who are multilingual, as well as the teachers and staff who helped them get that way, who helped prepare them. So, it was really a lovely event. The students who entered the essay contest and scored the highest read their essays out loud, and some of these essays were just heart-wrenching because all of them came to this country speaking not a word of English, and all of them are top scholars in just a very short period of time. So, there's so much to be said for stick-to-it-iveness and doing the job. So, I was very impressed with those, and really impressed that one of the finalists was our very own Brian Cruz, who you saw in the video tonight from Myler High School. He wrote a beautiful essay, and we were very, very proud that Rialto was so well-represented. So, congratulations to those people, and it was a great event, and I just wanna get on this PBIS thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. I just do want to congratulate Mr. Fitz, Myler High School, not only Principal Andy Luna, Assistant Principal Ms. Quayar, and the teachers, but all of the staff over there. Sometimes, sometimes, we all know that, that showing appreciation for all of the hard work and dedication of all of employees is important, but because someone is recognized one night over another, does not mean that we do not appreciate everybody. We always appreciate all employees, and if no appreciation is given one night, there's many other school board nights where we do show that appreciation and give that appreciation. So, so, please, please remember that we do appreciate everybody, and, and we show it. I just wanted to also thank the administrators who were able to attend with the parent volunteers, the Curtis T. Winton Parent Institute held the, held the small celebration for the parent volunteers last Wednesday at the Dolores Fuertes Azar Chávez Center. There was, I wanna say maybe 200 people, maybe 200 parents or so, and, and it really, it really shows, not only do we appreciate teachers in classified, but we really do appreciate parent volunteers as well, parents in this district. This week is, seems like this week is everything appreciation week, and, and we do appreciate, what is it, Nutrition Services Workers Appreciation Week? It's also Nurses Appreciation Week. Teacher Appreciation Day and Week, we had the other, you know, the other day. But let's not leave our classified out, we do appreciate our classified too, of course. And I, I think our district has, has really worked hard, not just to try to showcase the positive work and the good things happening in the district, but more than anything, give recognition where it's due, and truly show that we do appreciate all of the hard work. I want to just comment regarding positive behavior intervention systems. I, I totally agree, Ms. Lindberg and Ms. O'Kelly, in regard to perhaps the approach or perhaps the way the program is being utilized. We may have a lot of more work to do, we, we may provide or require more training, and at the end of the day, if it's not for our district and it doesn't work, or we just can't get it to work, there are other options. But from my understanding, our school district and some of our schools have received already recognition regarding positive work with PBIS. I, I think when we hear that we want PBIS to work and we wanna be proud of any accomplishments with PBIS, we don't wanna hear that students are creating havoc, or running amok, or doing, getting away with serious acts and not being disciplined for them. I don't think anyone on this board, or anybody that wants to give PBIS a try, would be happy to know or to think that because we have PBIS, or we're trying PBIS, that we're letting students beat each other up, or use drugs, or bring weapons to school, or whatnot. I think that would totally go against what, what PBIS is for. When I think of PBIS, I think of trying other ways of disciplining the students without suspending, without expelling, unless it was really warranted to expel them or suspend them. There's a big controversy with willful defiance right now. The state of California is considering banning suspending students for willful defiance. Now, there was, there was, there was a time, but they still do, and there was a time where students would get suspended and expelled, and I'm not saying our district, and maybe at one time in our district, but I know for sure in other districts and other schools, students were expelled or suspended for not getting out of their chair, or not doing their work, or taking, refusing to pick up the pencil. And on the flip side of things, we, we, we want to, we, we want, everybody wants order, and we want our students, just like we expect our staff. If we want staff to be held accountable and be responsible, of course, we want the students to be held accountable and be responsible, but they should not be getting away with hurting themselves, hurting other students, bringing anything to school, drugs and weapons, or whatever they may be bringing. If that's happening at your school, I suggest you report it to the district office if your school leadership is not doing anything about that serious, those serious things. Our safety and security officers do an awesome job stopping fights, preventing fights. Oftentimes, I think of them as counselors, teachers, friends, everything rolled into one, because, because to the students, oftentimes, the security officers know more about the student than some, some, some of the other employees, including sometimes the teachers. Our safety and security officers do an awesome job, they have a great relationship with most of the students, they do a good job at breaking up fights, they do a good job at preventing fights, but of course, they can't be, you know, on a 10-acre lot, 20-acre lot, at every single inch of that, that lot at all times. We would like to see more safety and security officers, we would like to have more resource officers, but we have to work with what we have at this time, and, and I salute our safety and security team, because they do, I believe they do a good job overall, and we've got a lot of work to do in many areas. I, I also just would like to comment that decisions are tough, decisions are tough to make. Sometimes, things are presented, decisions are presented to the board to go one way or another, and those decisions ain't always easy, but we do, at the end of the day, we try to make the best decision that we can, that's in the best interest of everybody involved, and, and oftentimes, information that is available to, to the board is not always available to the public, and I'm sure that employees who have confidentiality rights can understand. That's not to say that, that things can't be looked at at another time or whatnot, it all depends on, on, on the board as a whole. But we appreciate everybody coming here tonight, we appreciate everybody that comes here every day. We wanna hear from you, we want to value your input, so please continue to come and provide that. And with that, we're getting towards the end of the school year here pretty fast, looking forward to middle school promotions, looking forward to June 2nd graduations. And, oh, the last thing I wanted to say, I didn't know Mr. Singleton went to Eisenhower High School.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a mention of that may rest in peace, but until Saieda wrote, wrote a small article about it on the district's Facebook page, I said, "Wow, we got Ronnie Lot, we got Mr. Singleton." We, we really have had a lot of good people come through, through, not only through Eisenhower, but through these schools, and, and I'm proud of that. And, and that's one of the things that I wanted to finish with is, don't be afraid to be recognized, don't be afraid to be acknowledged. Mr. Luna said it earlier, "No, it's not me, it's not me." And, and I know oftentimes in education, school board members, superintendents, administrators, directors say, "Oh, it's not me, it's not me," you know, and, "Oh, I don't want no recognition," or "I don't wanna be acknowledged." But go ahead and, and let yourself be acknowledged, and let yourself be recognized. There is people that would love to have that recognition and acknowledgement, sometimes don't get it, get overlooked, but for those who are able to, to receive it, welcome that, because it's not about you, it's about this community. So, when you get recognized and you get acknowledged, our whole district is getting recognized and acknowledged, and our community's being acknowledged. So, remember that when you say, "Oh, no, no, don't, don't, don't give me this award," or "Don't make that recommendation for me." Oh, yeah, let people do it. If they, if they feel you deserve it, then not only you deserve it, but this whole district deserves it, our students deserve it. So, I wanna end with that. Thank you, and let's get started.
Mr. Montes, if I may, I would like to just wrap up a few comments, given some of the issues that have been presented today. And as a superintendent, there's nothing more that I want than safe campuses. I've always expressed to adults that there's no worse feeling than that anxiety of coming to work each and every day, not wanting to be at work. And I feel that for the kids as well, when they come to school and don't feel that they're coming to a place where they don't feel welcomed. And it goes for adults, and I recall being part and reading articles about schools in the 80s and 90s, that there was a lot of misbehavior in schools, and the response from many of the schools was to create more rules. And what the kids would do is figure out other ways to circumvent the rules, and the response from the schools was create more rules, to the point where it was creating these very- these very stressful environments for everybody. To the point where you saw in the 80s and the 90s, early 90s, a lot of full school riots. It wasn't one or two fights, it was massive. That was a reaction in part from the student body who just felt almost like caged animals, and the cages kept getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And I've seen this happen with adults as well. Whenever they have, let's say, a leader or a supervisor who's a micromanager and creates this very hostile work environment, the adults too feel that their, their cage, for lack of a better word, is getting smaller and smaller, and that frustration begins to build, where it creates a lot of frustration, animosity, anger, bitterness among the adult population on school campuses. And so part of the response to a lot of this has been different approaches, because I have found that most of the solutions are really grounded on relationships, whether it's the relationships that the adults develop with students, and the relationships that supervisors develop with their staff. That can address most of the issues that we face. And therefore shows up PBIS. And PBIS, just so you know, in general, is not for the kids, it's for the adults. PBIS is a different approach where the adults are to reflect on really how to build that relationship with the child, to create that positive learning environment for them. And while I agree that it shouldn't replace consequences or disciplines, I will work with my team to do a presentation for the board and for the community to show that suspensions have not been eliminated. In fact, that the schools that have expressed greater concern for consequences, their suspension rates have actually increased. And so it's not that we're not doing anything about it. I can tell you that, and the board knows, that students are still being expelled if it warrants expulsions. And I'll show you the suspension data that, yes, while it's decreased, that some of the schools this year is actually increasing. So I want to work with my team, work with the staff, both classified and certificated, to figure out how we can bring balance to this. Because I must say that we should worry about the dashboard, because we will become an improvement school as, by the state, especially if we continue to suspend certain populations of kids at a disproportionate rate. And before you know it, I can tell you, because I've been part of it, the ACLU and the Office of Civil Rights will come knocking at our door, and they will go and get or secure a court decree where we will be forced to address the issues that we need to address one way or another. And so we need to simply come together, look at our data, and figure out ways as a team to address this. I know that part of our team has been doing an amazing job with this. But I know that come end of year, behaviors oftentimes escalate, and they have nothing to do, many times, with what's happening on campus. The issues start off campus, they come on campus, and they manifest there, and we have to respond to it. So I will gather some information, get the team together, and make a presentation to the board, and work with a committee if we need to, to begin to really tackle these issues, so that we can have transparency in this process.
And on the same note, Dr. Avila, there are staff members who really feel like some people are giving kids the green light to do whatever they want to do without consequences because of PBIS. We need to look at that. Anybody else? Okay. So we go to item D. Thank you, Dr. Avila. We go to item D. We go to item D, Public Hearing, Public Information. Number one, Williams Inspections, Third Quarterly Report, 2018 through 2019, Reference D 1.1. And that's just for public information. Consent Calendar Items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Do we have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items, Reference E through J?
I would like to suggest that we pull item J 4.1, because a few issues came up that I think need to be looked at further.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And that's item J 4?
It was 4.1, I think was the number.
J 4.1. 4.1 through 2?
Hold on, just before we vote. Is this timely? Do, do we have time to pull it and bring it back? Okay. Yes, we have time.
Wait, excuse me. Is that a no, Rhonda? Is it time sensitive?
Well, the law says you've got to give a 60-day notice. You know, so we'd like to give as much notice as we possibly can if we're going to move down that path because of the work year calendar and everything. So this was kind of the board meeting that we were looking at to make that happen. So if we do move it to the next board meeting, then it would actually be starting the beginning of the next school year, and then, and then action would take place after that.
So we have to do it tonight or not?
I was just going to say, that just means that the timeframe that they would be on roughly anywhere from two to four more weeks, if the decision come, it doesn't come in. Doesn't mean that it's going to preempt the budget or do anything like that.
So right now, it's in, it's in the budget. The positions will not be there for the 19, 20 school year. So instead, they would actually start the school year.
Right.
So that would be added back into the budget for the amount of time that they would be back in there, if the board, you know, changed the date to move it forward.
And actually, they'd have less time to find positions?
Yes. One of the concerns, however, though, tonight was the fact that they got such short notice, they didn't even have time to look. So even if this is going to be a consideration, it still would give them more time to look if they're seeking another position while we investigate all the other parameters around the decision period. So is that, okay.
Well, we have a first and a second to pull the item. Do we have any other questions or comments? We could, staff could breathe this item back after taking a look at some of the things that were brought up and taking a look at the budget constraints. So your, your motion is to pull the item second.
Second.
Do we have any more questions or concerns, comments?
Let me just comment here. Okay, we're talking about personnel who possibly could be trained if they choose to, and to give...
Just, I'm, I'm sorry. We should be discussion, discussing, rather than discussing the item, we should be discussing whether to pull it or not.
It's the first and the second, so call for the vote.
Okay. Is, is everybody, any more comments regarding pulling the item?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right. So that leaves us with items Reference E through J, with the exception of...
J 4.1.
J 4.1 and 2. So do we have a motion to approve all items E through J, J 1 and 3?
So move.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Preferential vote? Thank you. And that's an aye for me, too. Next, we go to item K, Discussion Action Items. Item K 1, Award RFP Number 18-19-007 to Oric, Harrington, and, somebody help me with that last name?
Sutcliffe.
Sutcliffe, LLP, to serve the district as board counsel for the...
Bond.
I'm sorry.
Bond counsel.
District as bond counsel for the preparation of documents and issuance of general obligation bond for a fee not to exceed $60,000 plus an estimated fee for disclosure counsel from $25,000 to $40,000 plus expenses not to exceed $1,000 to be paid for from the sale of the Measure Y Series D General Obligation Bond, which will not impact the general fund. And that's Reference K 1.1.
Move to approve?
Just to, oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve?
Do we have a second? Okay.
I have a question. This, because it's all still Measure Y, this has no impact on the taxpayers, does it? That we're selling another series of bonds?
It, it will, yes. Every time you sell the bond, the, the taxpayers pay the, the bond. The district don't pay. So it will be a reflect on their property.
So taxes are going to go up again?
Well, it will go up, you know, until we dispose entire $98 million bond.
How much is left? How much is left?
$29 million.
The remaining balance is $29.3 million out of 98. So that is authorized. So we're going this time, based on the property values, we can probably sell up to $20 to $26 million. We, we don't have the number finalized yet, until we go to the selling the bond. So back to what Mrs. O'Callaghan is asking, is this going to increase taxpayers? Yes.
Do we know by how much?
We, it's not going to happen to the taxpayers right away, because, well, there's a, you know, it probably, it would reflect next year's, the property tax. So it depends on the property value, and the cap, the, the cap is $60 per $100,000 property. That's the board's approval. It's not that we can raise that $60 to $100. That's the max. Every $100, $100,000 property, the maximum increase is $60.
So if it's $300,000, if it's a $200,000 house, that's $120 that they're paying to the Measure Y?
That's max, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Yala?
Just to review a little history, when we had the $100 million Measure Y, it amounted to about $10 per household. That was the increase in the taxes.
That's pretty much it.
So you're, you're looking, you know, you said 25, so you're looking 1/4th, so what? $2.50 a month.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's, it's not a huge impact to the taxpayers, but there will be increase.
And also, they don't start paying until the bonds are completely sold, right?
No, every time it's sold, the, the, there was...
That cost is reflected, but in other words, they're not paying on the whole 98 million until the whole 98 million is used up?
You're correct. You're correct. So it's incremental increase. It's not all one time.
All right, that's what I wanted to check. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to item K 2, Award RFP Number 18-19-006, for an agreement with California Financial Services as the district's financial advisor, and will also serve as a pricing consultant for the preparation of documents and issuance of Measure Y Series D General Obligation Bond for a fee not to exceed $60,000 to be paid for from the sale of Measure Y Series D General Obligation Bond with no impact to the general fund. Reference K 2.1. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to item K 3, Award RFP 18-19-008, for an agreement with Citigroup Global Markets Inc. as the district's bond underwriter for the preparation of documents and issuance of Measure Y Series D General Obligation Bond for a fee exclusive, inclusive of all expenses not to exceed $84,973 to be paid from the sale of Measure Y Series D General Obligation Bond with no impact to the general fund. Reference K 3.1. Do we have a motion?
Send me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to K 4, authorize a scholarship check in the amount of $2,000 for student board member Jasmine Hernandez to be paid from the general fund. Reference K 4.1.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can take us out to dinner.
Next, we go to item K 5, accept the building as assets reducing risks bar grant to provide a one-time I-III federal grant fund of $160,000 that will be dispersed through a three-year period. Reference K 5.1. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think anybody wants to question free money.
No.
Next, we go to K 6, approve an agreement with Innovative Ed to develop and implement the district leadership team, DLT, principal collaboratives, PCs, school leadership teams, SLTs, and teacher teams, TMs, with 20 schools for a total of 118 days, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, at a cost of $336,000 to be paid from the general fund. Move to approve?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes. So know that this item last year was also subsidized by the County Office of Education. This year, we'll continue, we'll, we'll submit a proposal for the county to support the district. So this cost may end up being zero or be limited to a much smaller amount.
Nice. That would be nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to item 7, approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, stipulated expulsion case numbers 18-19-56 and 18-19-57.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of approving these expulsions?
Aye.
The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Dr. John R. Castellunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. And last but not least, we have item L, adjournment. And could we have a motion from, can we have a second?
Is Jasmine going to, so move?
So move.
Oh. She was looking over me and grinning like she wanted to do it.
Okay, and preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye, the time is 9:11.